Welcome, everyone, this evening. To the regular session of the Board of Commissioners for November 13th, 2017. The Board of Commissioners met in executive session this evening to discuss a legal matter. And further, if you'll please take the role, Mr. Secretary.
I certainly will. Mr. D'Amelio?
Here.
Mr. McCluskey?
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. McGarretty?
Here.
Mr. Waxler?
Here.
Mr. Oliva?
Here.
And Mr. Connell?
Here. For our prayer, if I would ask those who can, please stand, and those who wish to kneel and reflect may do so as well. Mr. Denny, if you will please do the honors for an introduction.
Thank you, Commissioner Connell. It's my pleasure to introduce tonight. She's kind of new, first time here. This is Sister Jessica from the St. Rifi-
Rafaela.
Rafaela.
Rafaela Retreat Center up in Haverford, and Sister has just been there about a year, and this is her first time, so I wanted to give her a warm welcome to everyone from Haverford Township and welcome her. And before she does the prayer, on behalf of the Haverford Township Clergy Association, I wanted to let people know that the annual Community Interfaith Thanksgiving Service will be held Sunday, November 19th, at 3:00 p.m., and this year it's at the Armenian Martyrs' Church on Edmonds Avenue. So, everyone is welcome to attend that. It's a nice annual event, just the different congregations around the community come together, and even those who are not part of a congregation are welcome, and it's just a nice way to sort of kick in the Thanksgiving season. So, that's November 19th at Armenian Martyrs' Church at 3:00 p.m. So, Sister.
Let us come to God with Thanksgiving, that which opens us to recognize the presence of good, the reality of truth, the desire for greater love and beauty in our community. With each call, we will respond together. We give you thanks. For the good world, for things great and small, for the beauty that surrounds us, for the safety and well-being of our community, we give you thanks. For community life, for talking and moving and thinking together, for common hopes and hardships shared throughout the years.
We give you thanks.
For the work we have been given to do and the strength to do it, for comradeship of labor, for exchanges of good humor and encouragement.
We give you thanks.
For the families of our community, for living together and eating together, for unconditional acceptance, forgiveness, and love, for the kindness and generosity shared with neighbors.
We give you thanks.
For the children of our community, for their energy and curiosity, for their brave play and startling frankness, and for their sudden sympathies.
We give you thanks.
For the young of our community, for their high hopes, for their energy to transform worn-out values, for their search for freedom, for the developing commitments and promises.
We give you thanks.
For those growing up and those growing old in our community, for wisdom deepened by experience, and for time made precious by its passing.
We give you thanks.
Generous God, you have given us life. May we never forget to give thanks. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Chief?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sister. And good evening, everyone. Is this on? It is. First thing I would like to do is recognize in the audience tonight, we have Commissioner-Elect Jerry Hart. And Commissioner-elect, if you wish to do so, it is up to you. If you would like to join us up here where it has township staff, or you could say where you are. It's up to you, but I want you to feel welcome and a part of it. Okay? Thank you. And congratulations. I do want to change out one thing this evening after we do the proclamation. We're about to do a proclamation. After that, gentlemen, if, just take a show of hands, I would like to change the agenda, item number 14. No, I'm sorry, item number-
Eleven.
-11, up to item number three, which will be right after the proclamation. Okay? We just want to-
Okay.
Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. So, let us proceed with the proclamation on item number two. Commissioner Waxler and Commissioner Lewis.
Yeah, I'd ask Kevin also come up, since the young people being honored for-
Commissioner McCluskey. Very good.
And I guess if Sister left, thank you. There was something very appropriate in her prayer about praying for the young, and their compassion, and their growing, and their learning, and do that. Tonight's proclamation is right along those alleys. A little bit of background to this proclamation. Back, Hurricane Harvey was the cautious hurricane we've had on record in the United States. Inflicted about $200 billion in damage, primarily from widespread flooding in the Houston metropolitan area. It was the first major hurricane to make landfall in the United States since Wilma in 2005, ending a 12-year span in which no hurricanes made landfall at such an intensity in this country. In a four-day period, many areas received more than 40 inches of rain as the system slowly meandered over eastern Texas and adjacent waters, causing catastrophic flooding, with peak accumulations of about 65 inches in the metropolitan area. So, it was the wettest cyclone that we've had near resulted in displaced more than 30,000 people from their homes and prompted more than 17,000 rescues, which our first responders can attest to how difficult a period that must have been for a major area at that time. So, tonight is a, I'll read the proclamation, whereas the Board of Commissioners, and I'd ask the two young women to come up while we do this, and then we're going to go.
Welcome, ladies.
Eleanor Rayer and Grace Brown from Cooper Town Elementary. And I'd also ask-[448.37][448.37](applause) I'd also ask their principal, Beth Mastercola, to join them. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to deviate. I'm going to read the proclamation as to what they've done, and then I'm going to show you a short response from those that benefit from their generosity down in Houston. So, the proclamation, the formal proclamation is, "Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, take tremendous pleasures in acknowledging notable acts of compassion of local students in our community. Whereas the Board of Commissioners wish to applaud two 5th grade Cooper Town Elementary School students and their principal for choosing to show their philanthropic sides by generating funds for schools affected by hurricanes, and whereas after Hurricane Harvey ravaged Houston, Eleanor Rayer and Grace Brown decided to help out Colter Elementary School. Whereas with support from Principal Beth Mastercola, both Eleanor and Grace wanted to raise $2,014 to help rebuild the school's science labs. When all was said and done, parents and fellow students overwhelmingly contributed over $2,600, which I think has gone well over $3,000 already. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that said Board of Commissioners hereby acknowledge and thanks Eleanor Rayer and Grace Brown for their admirable contribution to Colter Elementary School. Proclaimed this 13th day of November, 2017, the Haverford Board of Commissioners, Chris Connell, Senior President, Larry Gentile Township Manager." Ladies, thank you for that.[551.54][551.54](applause) So, what happened is, at the beginning of the school year, as I get the story, and maybe the principal can correct me as I go on, is they heard about the tragedy. One of their mothers had a friend who taught in the school, and Eleanor decided she wanted to help them. They lost their science lab in, at the elementary school. And the main thing was, Colter Elementary's mascot is the Cougar, just like Cooper Elementary. So, I think that was a tie. They tied the Cooper Elementary kids to the Colter Elementary kids, and really informed that bond and energized these two girls. And they went to their principal on the first day of school and told them what she wanted to do, and as I am told by everyone, she empowered them to do it. She did not take over. She said, "Girls, you do this, you do that," and these two young women have gone through and energized the school. And out of that, I believe there's another program in a much larger degree that other grades in the school have come up with a program in a larger responsibility called Cooper Town Cares. And other classes have adopted other projects for other schools, other units that need help, and it's just taken a measure of its own, and it's going on, and it's the outgrowth of two young women in our community that represent us to help their fellow students, their fellow Cougars down in Houston. I was so intrigued that I called, I called down to Colter Elementary and have emailed back and forth to the principal down there. And she wrote me back. I asked her if she would want to say a few words, and with the technology, I was kind of hoping we'd have her on the screen, but they're not that available, so they're still devastated. They don't have the technology down there. But here's what she wrote me back, after I told her what we were doing. She said, "This is incredible. Truly, they both have such big hearts. Our science lab and new maker space were a huge part of our curriculum. Our science lab teacher even hosted an Explorer program after school where kids could participate in hands-on projects outside the classroom. As you've probably heard by now, the building was a complete loss and has been taken down to the walls and windows. Our teachers lost all of their contents, and many of our students lost their homes. As devastating as it was, we've started school in a temporary location and are finding our new normal. We're getting stronger thanks to the kindness of strangers and new friends we've never met. We are a resilient community, and I have no worries that this will only make us stronger. I don't know if you'll have the option of showing this video or not, and we do, but my phys ed teacher, my PE teacher, made this to mark our first two weeks post-Harvey. Everyone in this video is either a teacher, a parent, or a friend of someone that works at Colter Elementary. The homes that you see we're working on belong to our students. It's what we did until we could figure out what to do with our school. Please let everyone know that they've picked a wonderful school family to support, and for my Colter family to yours, thank you from Texas." So, that's from their principal. And what I'll do is I'll show this short little film that she sent up, and you can Ladies, you've made a big difference. You've seen what tragedy they've gone through as students, and you guys have given them a little bit of sunshine, both your school, all your students. So, congratulations to all of you, and I'd like to present each one of you with his plaque. Eleanor? Grace? Thank you very much. And thank you. What a round of applause.[1035.02][1035.02](applause)
Thank you, Commissioners. All right. Next on the agenda, we moved up item number 11, which is ordinance number P-142017, tax credit for volunteer firefighters. This is a second reading, and-
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance P-142017, further supplementing Chapter 165 taxation and establishing Article 6 property tax credit to qualifying volunteers of Bon Air, Brookline, Lanark, Manoa, and Oakmont Fire Companies.
Second.
Second by Mr. McGarretty. Any discussion or comment? There being none, Mr. Secretary, please take the role. When you have a chance.
Yes, sir. Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarretty?
Yes.
Mr. Waxler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Yes.
Can we get a picture of real fire?
I would like to recognize that the Bureau of Fire is in attendance tonight, the Chiefs of the Bureau of Fire.
Chief Viola is going to speak on our behalf.
If you'd let me get it out. Are you running for election?
Oh!
Holy mackerel.
I said.
But I'm the Fire and EMS Commissioner.
Chief Viola is here this evening to also represent the Bureau of Fire.
Commissioners, thank you very much. Chief Hatton, who's the Director of the Bureau of Fire this year, is in Florida checking out the new apparatus. But on behalf of the Bureau of Fire, I'd like to thank you for this vote on, this final vote on this ordinance. This was a lot of hard work for about a year and a half or so, and I'll name the committee members Frank Hand from Oakmont, Chuck Katz from Oakmont, Jack Welch and Dylan Cullen from Lanark, from the Brookline, Mark Sweeney from Bon Air, Andrew Coffey, John Waters, Senior from Manoa, Andrew Cole, and Kevin Smith. And Commissioner Connell, obviously you were a big part of this from the beginning in pushing it through. This will benefit 111 members of the fire companies. And what this tax relief does, homeowners in Haverford Township who are active volunteer firemen will get a tax-free benefit, I think, depending on what they're, about $200 per household. So, this is a big part of retaining firemen in the township, and with the younger members, allow them, as they get older and start looking to buy houses and start a family, that they'll stay here in Haverford Township. We can retain these volunteers. So, on behalf of myself and the Bureau of Fire and membershipary, Commissioner Connell, we thank you very much. It's a big, big step for the firemen of Haverford Township. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
We have to run. What? First you come up? I don't think it makes any difference. I'm not, no.
Next on the agenda, which is now, we're not doing the construction manager's update. That was for the work session.
Mr. Viola?
Five. Yep. Item number five on the agenda is Police Department crime update.
Commissioners, thank you. The police crime report for October 2017, 226 parking tickets were issued, 238 traffic citations, 245 written warnings. On October the 8th, there was an attempted armed robbery at the Pep Boys Store in Haverford Road, which is also the Exxon station. A white male, the suspect, displayed a firearm. Nothing was taken. A person of interest has been identified. An ongoing investigation with several jurisdictions. At a burglary on Colonial Road of an unoccupied residence, two juveniles and one adult were arrested. And a vehicle theft on Davis Road, theft of vehicles, Temby Road, Upland Road, Upland Road, Sagamore Road, Marion, and Alcott, once again, all unlocked vehicles. Attempted theft of vehicles on Upland, Belmont, and Shawnee. But as I say every meeting, all these vehicles are unlocked. K-9 usage attracted the suspect in the Pep Boys attempted robbery. That's the October crime report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? Thank you very much. Item number six are any Commissioner Committee updates.
I would like to give an update on the Economic Development Committee. The HPD is having their annual meeting tomorrow at the Crack from 6:30 to 8:30. Just want to remind everyone that the annual meeting is there, and please, please come. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else?
Mr. President, just a reminder to everybody that next Monday is our first budget meeting. So, we'll be addressing the, and hopefully passing, the first reading of the budget next Monday.
That one's on 20th Monday or Tuesday?
Seven o'clock.
Monday.
Twenty.
Thank you.
Mr. President? The ordinance committee will be conferring. I've worked with Assistant Township Manager Denny on an ordinance, or addressing the ordinance with dogs in the park, and Assistant Township Manager Witup and I have met, and we want to go through with the committee with an update on the chicken ordinance rather than have another hour discussion here. So, once we finalize the drafts, then I'll circulate them with the ordinance committee, and then we'll have them for discussion at next month's work session.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Gentlemen, anyone else? Do you look over question?
No, it looks like he was reminding me of something that I forgot. Yeah, and we're also working, we're waiting for the final input from the police about commercial vehicles to try to address that as well. Hopefully, we'll have all three for the December work session to discuss.
Thank you. Okay, that will conclude item number six on the agenda. Item number seven is the Township Ordinator update, and the Township Manager will give us that update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Zlaknik had sent us an email to Mrs. Cutler-Sinonai saying unfortunately, he's unable to make tonight's meeting. Please be advised, the Commissioner is, in his opinion, after examining the reports and having all his questions answered to his satisfaction, there are no irregularities for the period in question, and he wishes everyone in the community and this board a pleasant Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Number eight on the agenda is Citizens Forum. This is 20 minutes registered speakers and 20 minutes on agenda items. The 20 minutes on registered speakers, we will begin this evening with Mr. Chad Brooks from the Grange Estate. Welcome.
Connor's going to come up with me.
Connor Quinn, okay, will be assisting you. Very good.
Getting all the heavyweights here.
Also from the Grange.
Thank you. So, we, first of all, want to report to the Commissioners that we had a good summer season. We had several events using the amphitheater, and I want to come back to that idea, but we had George Washington on the Fourth of July, which was a lot of fun. The library's last musical event was there, and I understand it was packed, and we had the Homebrew Hang, which also used the amphitheater for a musical presentation. It's important for the Grange to begin to use that facility because we require funds. We just found out this week that the heater in the farmhouse, which is a source of revenue for the Grange, is broken. Will have to be replaced. That'll be a $4,000 to $5,000 project. And George Harding, who is the other township representative for the Grange, at the last meeting expressed concerns about the amount of money going out and the lack of money coming in. So, it's important that, what I'm going to tell you about next, that we have a good Christmas season. It's the major time that we raise funds for the Grange. So, let me talk about that. The Christmas tours begin Saturday, November 25th, and I don't think you will be disappointed if you attend, and I really, really encourage all the Commissioners to pop in at least sometime over the holidays. The trains this year have a surprise. I'm sworn to secrecy, but I guarantee you'll be blown away when you walk into the train room, and kids love it. If you have children or grandchildren, you definitely want to bring them. The house is starting to look great. Most of the rooms are decorated. There's some new things, but the house will look very nice. That begins November 25th. The tours are from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. on the weekends through January 7th. On Saturday, December 2nd, is the Christmas party. And again, I would love to see a lot of Commissioners there. It's a fun event, there is musical accompaniment, the, it's a good time, it's a good way to start the season. You get to sing Christmas carols. It's a very pleasant event. You get a kind of a preview. You get to be the first person that go through and see the house, and again, the trains will be open that night, and you get to see the trains in the evening. It's $25 a person. There are light refreshments, and as I said, there's music. We will be closed on Sunday, December 24th, that's Christmas Eve, but we open on December 26th, the day after Christmas. 26th, the day after Christmas. And last year, that was our biggest day. Much to our surprise, we had never done it before. But December 26th, that Monday, people are ready to get out of the house, they're ready to, if they have guests, they want something to do. Bring them to the Grange. They won't be disappointed. If you have guests from out of town, they will be delighted, and they will compliment you on that facility, that that facility is in your town. The other thing I want to talk about tonight to the commissioners is we really could use additional volunteers. We could expand the Friends of the Grange. So if you know people that are interested in these kinds of things, and there's lots of things to be done, the garden really has a vision now. They have a vision for where they want to take the garden. So if you're someone who has an interest in gardening, this is a real opportunity for you to get in on the ground floor of a really exciting time expanding the garden. We have an Eagle Scout. Steve Mittelman is going to do the sunken garden and repair the wall there. If you know Eagle Scouts who need a project, please have them come to the Grange and talk to Bill Penn, and he can set them up with an Eagle Scout project. They're a great help. Girl Scouts came in and helped us this year also, achieving some of their badges. So please, I was at the Woodlands on Saturday. Woodlands is a historic cemetery in West Philadelphia, and they have a house that dates approximately to the Grange. John Lewis, who is one of the 19th century owners of the Grange, is buried at the Woodlands. But I was impressed in how many young people they had there. They have, they really trend young, and we could use that at the Grange. So I know it's hard for parents with young children always to get involved, but if you're an empty nester, or your children are in high school and are more independent, please volunteer for the Grange and come in and be part of it. If you are interested in the tickets for the party, you can call the Grange, 610-446-1958. That number's on the website. And by the way, we have a new website. It is thegrangeestate.org, and it's completely revamped for easy to use. We also have a Twitter feed, @GrangeEstate. So we are getting into the social media part of it. And I think that if we could encourage more people to come out, more people to be participating, I would love to see younger people. We are getting some younger guides. We had young people come out and help bring the ornaments downstairs, and they were fantastic. I'm very grateful for their service. So that's it for the Grange. Connor, anything you want to add?
Say it.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, there's five big running events coming up in Haverford. The Cardinal Foley Turkey Trot, it's always a fun event. That's at Annunciation on November 25th. The Chili Trail Run, which the Recreation Department sponsors, great event, a lot of fun if you've always wanted to run a trail for a little leery. It's well-marked, it's well-organized, and you'll have a lot of fun, and they have nice little refreshments afterwards, maybe with some adult beverages. And then the, one of the biggest events, one of the biggest running events in Haverford Township is the Reindeer Romp on December 10th. It has an unusual starting time, it's 3:00 p.m. It's a really, really nice event. Kevin Nolan has organized it. He has literally contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars to the American Cancer Society. He bears a lot of the cost. So your donation, when you sign up and enter, your entry fee, that goes to the American Cancer Society. That whole fee goes. He gives you a real nice shirt, and he has real nice amenities afterwards, too. But the Reindeer Romp oftentimes sells out, they cap it at 600. So, once the, once the entries are gone, they're gone. So if you're interested, and the Foley event and the Reindeer Romp are both walker-friendly, so if you only can walk, come out and walk with us.
Thank you very much.
Chad, Chad, could you send us a, an email with the information about the party?
Yes.
As well as the volunteer opportunities at the Grange, so we can blast it out to her.
Yes. And by the way, if you have anybody, we have an opening right now. If you, if somebody you know loves antiques, we could use a collections manager. Right now, somebody to volunteer to help manage. That, that post is vacant right now.
Thanks.
Thanks Connor for standing up next to Chad. Appreciate that.
Did a great job.
Can I just say, for the Grange Estate, you got to see Chad Brooks, the gentleman that just spoke, see his display of the Christmas trees and all the ornaments that he puts out at the Grange Estate. And when they talk about the gardens and all, we have a lot of ladies and gentlemen down there in their 80s that are working on the gardens. So, as Chad said, we need younger people to come down, or anybody to volunteer, please come down. Lot of nice people to meet there. The Haverford High School supplied 10 use, I think it was, wasn't it Chad? To help us bring all the stuff down from the attic to the different rooms where we're going to have the display, so. And again, the Christmas party is the big seller. We hope we can sell out this year. We've done it for the last two years. So please come down to the Grange. And the big item is the trains. If you have grandkids, bring them down, and if you bring them down this year, you'll be down for the next four or five years. The kids will make you take them, I guarantee it.
I'm deducting that for your time at the end.
Okay, I'll cut it short at the end.
Thanks. And, look, Chad, I got some extra time on my hands, I'll be down to volunteer. And I'm going to ask my commissioner for everything! All right, next on it, we have, anybody else want to say anything about the Grange? Okay, next on the list, we have Michael Levin, who wishes to speak about the chickens and excessive traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen. I have a quick, this will come rather rapidly. I have questions as well as comments to make. First, I'd like to ask, to have a report on what this property tax referendum is that has apparently been passed in the state to relieve homeowners of property tax. I'd like to know the procedure by which this is going to be handled. Second, I would like to see a police report that deals with quarterly and yearly reports on traffic, and I'll explain to you why in this. I would like to know why there was water in the municipal building. This is a new building, and apparently I have heard that there was flooding in that building. I'd like to know why. You're not even through with the parking lot yet, which is going to increase the amount of water. Of course, you brought up a very interesting point concerning Houston. The United States government would rather send out FEMA than quelt, than squelch the climate change problem. They are the only nation out of nearly 200 that has rejected this and is not sending scientists to the conferences. This is outrageous. All they seem to have done is appoint unqualified people to environmental committees and are attempting to load the courts with equally unqualified people. Larry Holmes should know something about this, and so should the other lawyers on this, on this panel. I am appalled and outraged after spending 47 years supporting the projects of the Environmental Protection Agency to hear that this nonsense is going on in government. And it starts at the top. As far as parking is concerned, or traffic is concerned, I want to discuss briefly traffic, parking lots, and excess autos in streets. In the first place, in Havertown, the parking lots feel fast, largely under capacity. There's, there are streets which are packed with cars on both sides. You have to halt to get through a street that is not open to traffic because the cars are coming the other way. Road repairs are unfinished. They dig the holes, but they don't fill them in properly for months, and for a long period of time. We have excess automobiles on the street. There are more cars, I think, than adult people in this township. Taking an example, Darby Road, at Mill Road, which I came through tonight to turn onto Darby Road, I could make that right turn at the traffic light. It is red. On the other hand, I'm taking my life in the, in my hands because there's a bus stop right there that you can't see the cars which are coming unless they have their lights Turning briefly to the chickens issue, which you might neatly put into a later meeting, you know that in 2016, because you were informed, that there were 895 cases of chicken contamination that led to poisoning in 48 states. In 2012, 195 people were sickened. Results for 2017 haven't been made known yet. They're likely to be as high. You learned that washing your hands and everything in contact with chickens in the yard should be, should be done. That 30% of the infections in children of both bacterial infections and viruses are affected by children under five years of age, where they have relatively little immunity. There should be no snuggling or kissing of chickens as pets. Did you know that there's a thriving market that's been created to put diapers on chickens and to put saddles on their back? What do they need saddles for? They need saddles for the males, which are equally aggressive, and after mating, they pull the feathers out in back of the chicken, probably to make them look less attractive. All of these chickens are results of the descendants from jungle fowl of Eastern Asia. Has Haverford grown so much that you need more than a township manager? Has Haverford grown to the point where you need a mayor to start taking some of these projects in hand? Particularly dealing with traffic reports? A traffic report done for a, a community that you want to set up with five or six or 10 houses is not enough. You need reports that deal with the surrounding communities which send their flow of traffic into Haverford. And choose this as a way of getting to a place and not taking Westchester Pike or a major through road. When I try to get out of Haverford in the morning, Havertown in the morning particularly, I'm in a quandary. If I want to get to Paoli, I have to go off Darby Road, or Haverford Road. They're both congested. Going down to Westchester Pike is just as bad, whether I take Manoa Road, or whether I take, or whether I take Darby Road right through to Westchester Pike. Listen, you have a community which is embedded in other communities. You've got to know what's going on in the township in the mornings, not during the non-rush hour days. So, in making, in making this report to you, I, I'm saying that I want to know about this property tax referendum. I want to know why a brand-new building is collecting water, presumably on the lower floors, where as I, as I would understand it, there are attractive features for prisoners down there. Third, police report, in addition to being the spot reports, should be quarterly as well as yearly, so we can have some idea of what we're doing with the tickets that we're offering. On climate, these people should know that what is occurring now is absolutely sickening at the federal level.
Thank you very much, Mr. Levin. Next on the agenda, we have, next, our next speaker is actually Mark Golden from the new Penfield Civic Association. Mr. Golden, welcome.
Thank you for the extra time, Mr. Cullen. Thank you very much. I just want to say thanks to Chris Connell from the entire Penfield Civic Association. You have been very fundamental in changing over the Penfield Civic Association to us on Lawson Avenue. Everything went smoothly, and these last couple of Fourth of Julies have been so much fun to plan and to work with you on, and we hope, moving forward, you will continue to work with the Penfield Civic Association, especially with the Fire Department, because we love working with you guys. And again, we just want to say thank you very much for all your work. We appreciate it. Also, congratulations to the other award winners, and Jerry Hart for his victory. We also want to say that we are looking forward to and hoping to work with the other civic associations moving forward to build community gatherings in the future. One of the ones we tried, I know they got the Homebrew Hang, myself and John Joseph were the two who put that together the last two years. And we are working with Kathy Parkinson to get younger volunteers from the community to step up and hopefully volunteer with the Grange Estate. And hopefully, some of the other townships will do that as well. Pretty much the only concern I have is on Caracung between the Brookline Station and the pool in the field on both sides. Cars tend to fly down Caracung pretty quickly, and it's expected, and I'm not going to complain about that, but there's enough road where, because kids in the summertime go to the pool and on the weekends maybe go to the fields, would it be possible to consider in 2018 adding budget for paths on the side of the road or on the, in, off the road to allow for safety for people to be able to walk from the neighborhood to those pools? And again, it's because those, that corner's also a blind corner right around Caracung Pool and the ball field. So, and again, let's see, if the Grange Estate could also make sure you send out PDFs to all the civic associations or emails to all of us, we would be more than happy to help spread the word for all those events. And again, thank you to everybody for your hard work, and we look forward to working with y'all moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, next is for Citizens Forum. We have the agenda, anybody who wishes to speak on agenda items. So, with this side of the room, first row, third row, last row, on this side of the room, the back, back row, anybody up front, anybody on this side of the room? No? Okay. Thank you very much. As far as, let's see, Mr. Brooks, you have all your stuff, thank you. We'll get the information then to the commissioners.
Don't forget Connor, too.
Is that Connor?
Yes, Connor.
And, and thank you for all the hard work that the staff of the Grange, Friends of the Grange do every year to keep that old building up, and thank you to the township staff for...
Mr. Quinn is a big asset at the Grange.
Yes, he is. Very big asset. Mr. Levin, you had several things here. I see you have a punch list here as far as requests for information on, for township. You can go to Mr. Gentile's office and request that information. As far as your request for the, for state, you would go to our state representative on Manoa Road and Darby Road. Representative Vitale is where you go to. For, and that would include any police report, traffic information?
Well, if we had that information, yeah. I, I, I just, I think it's important to mention that, first of all, I agree with Dr. Levin. Traffic is difficult in, in this township, but the majority of the roads that we're talking about are state highways. And Delaware Valley Regional Planning works with PennDOT to do these type of studies. So again, that would probably, Mr. Vitale's office would be your best bet to get that type of information, because they are all state highways.
The township road, now we have road programs, and actually, one great thing, Haverford Township has the ordinance where if a utility comes in and puts so many holes on that road, they're required to repave completely that side of the street. As a, I don't know if the state, I don't think the state has that.
No, they don't.
Requirement, but in Haverford Township, we do. So that's why it's our commitment to keep the roads as safe and in best condition as they can. Every other year, we have the maintenance, the street maintenance program.
Yeah, 2019 will be the next major road reservicing program. There's not one called for 2018. We normally do one every other year.
The, as far as the, the number of cars, the parking lots, believe me, all the time, the township looks at what parking lots we have in the township. Right now, the very seat you're sitting in, one day could be part of a municipal parking lot, when, should this building come down. Haverford Township... Havreford Township is the fifth-largest community in Pennsylvania. We, 50,000 people, we are bordered by Upper Darby Township, that is the largest township in the Commonwealth, and Lower Marion, which is the second-largest township in the Commonwealth. And those communities use our roads as well. Not so much our cut-through streets as the residential roads, but more the main roads, the state roads. So, unfortunately, we have no control on that. Our own people, everybody has a car. Oh, my gosh, every household, when I was growing up, maybe one car, two at the very most, if you had money. Today, there's probably three, four, five cars to each household. That we cannot control either, and in the eighth ward, we have an overwhelming number of homes that have shared driveways. So, we are a victim of circumstance. Yes, all the time, especially when it snows, we ask people to please use your driveways. Many do, some don't, but we'll, moving forward, I will ask all the commissioners again that when it goes to snow, they have their emails to put out to please include people moving into their driveways. As far as the chickens go, thank you very much for your comment, and I will ask that the ordinance committee please take into consideration the comments of Mr. Levin. The township does continue to grow, not near as what we were in the 70s. In the 70s, we were at 55,000, but not as many cars. So, as far as traffic patterns go, anytime there is a considerate development in this township, the traffic patterns are conducted for who goes up that roadway and as far as patterns go. As well, matter of fact, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Wexler and Commissioner Oliva, when the shopping center was put in at the Lanark Quarry, there's a road that comes out there, it's now eroded, that comes out there to Westchester Pike, and that was put in there specifically for a pattern issue so people could come out and use the Westchester Pike as opposed to going out on Township Line Road and...
Coming through the neighborhoods and through that ward to come back through there. Yes.
So, that, so the township continues to look at traffic patterns in the township as well. Leak, leak on the building, Mrs. Widow, if you wish to come up and speak regarding the leak that we had.
There was an uncapped conduit that one of the contractors had when the concrete walls were poured for the underground portion of the building. The conduit was run through the walls, placed in the walls for the wires to be pulled. One of the conduits that was unused was left uncapped during that heavy storm. An area that's to be a rain garden filled up with water, which is what it was designed to do, hold some stormwater, and it swamped the conduit, the open conduit, which acted to direct the water right into the records room of the brand-new police building and caused a bit of damage. There were insurance claims filed. The corrections are underway. I think we have the flooring almost done.
We'll be back in by next Monday.
Yeah, so the records room should be up and running again in a week.
Thank you very much. For Caracung Drive, Mr. Goldman, the request for Mill Road, I will refer to Commissioner Holmes, as that is in the sixth ward. Traffic issues with the kids, or traffic concern, when the children are walking in the summertime, the section between Mill Road...
Yeah, like the Brookline Train Station and then the side of the road, how it goes up to Caracung Pool and the ball field.
Right. Now, there is a sidewalk from the train station to Mill Road, but there's not one that continues.
Yeah. So, would they be able to consider possibly doing that just to keep the kids off the road? That's what?
That would have to work, we'd have to work in conjunction with the state on that because Caracung Drive is a state road.
Okay.
And all, okay? So, I'll...
Well, I'd be happy to do it. I mean, I think we, I mean, that entire stretch of Caracung is dangerous.
For our trails, maybe part of our trails could...
Sundays, which is great because families take advantage of it. But, yeah, you're right, it is dangerous, but you can't, I mean, people are going to drive it.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
You've got to come up.
Could you please?
Well, he doesn't need to...
Let me answer this. He does, we can't go back and forth.
He doesn't need to come up. I'll just make clear. I think there are things we could do at Caracung Road, you know, all along Caracung Road, but certainly the stretch from Mill Road to the baseball field and to the pool is something we ought to look at. We have the room to build. Now, regardless of it being a state road, it probably falls on us to build a bike path or a sidewalk.
Or a trail program.
Yeah, with, and, you know, that would be, that would be great if we could do it. That is a treacherous road, and it's astonishing that we've gone this far without something tragic there, and it worries me because it's...
There's been many tragedies.
A road that encourages speeding and unfortunately has very attractive things in it that draw kids to it, the ballpark and the pool. But, happy to, you know, happy to do whatever this board, frankly, in the township, has the appetite to do.
Over here?
I...
Mr. McGarrity or Mr. Wexler?
Is he done?
Well, I was going to say, I was, Dr. Levin called me out by name on some of the things he said. I'd be happy to address them, but I could do that at the end of the meeting if you'd prefer.
Yes, please.
I just want to back up to Dr. Levin and one thing that was said there, and I just want to correct it because you're right about the holes in the roads and things like that, and I agree with you. I'm sure that what you're talking about is state highways, not township streets, because Richard Doherty is our public works director, and I guarantee you, any hole that's on a township street, he fixes and it's done correctly. I just wanted to back up and say that.
Mr. Wexler?
Yeah, two things. I'll agree with Dr. Levin on the bus shelters. Been a concern of mine on many intersections. I know they're on state highways, but we pull out of local roads. We pull out on the Township Line at Greenview Road, we pull out the Westchester Pike at Steel Road, and you cannot see the oncoming traffic because the advertising in those bus shelters blocks your view from oncoming traffic. And we have, again, at Edmunds Avenue as well, and I'm sure there's other places along the Pike in the first ward where you try to pull out, and the advertising blocks your view of the oncoming traffic. The second thing, when we talk about the safety to the ball field and everything, I think we need to work on a higher level with all our playgrounds. The Crack, you can't walk to, you can't bike to, it's dangerous to get there. Steel Field in my ward, trying to get there, there's no sidewalks leading to our heavily-used parks. Merry Place, Glendale Park, there's no sidewalks or bike paths there. We encourage our kids to come to these parks. We just put the skate park in, the brand-new skate park's open, so come down and look at it, but we don't give our kids a means to ride a bike or walk to these facilities. So, it's not only, I agree with Mr. Holmes, I agree with Mr. Golden pointing it out, that's one park, but we have four, five, or six other parks where we have the same exact issue with our children and people and mothers and young children coming to our parks that can't, we've made them inaccessible to walking and biking. So, we need to look at that at a higher level, I think, is just my suggestion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holmes, I rescind my last statement. I would be partisan allowing the other two gentlemen, so please, by all means, you may continue.
I don't, I don't think of it as partisan or bipartisan. The question was asked as whether I, in particular, was keen to the issues at the federal government level about environment and also keen to the, perhaps, the lack of qualifications of judicial candidates. I bolt out of bed every night thinking about what this current federal government has done with regard to energy, with regard to climate change, with regard to education. I worried for the 12 years of the Reagan-Bush comedy team, what they did to the federal courts, and I'm now nostalgic for them compared to what's happening now with the, with President Trump's choices for people to go into the federal judiciary for life. But I will remind Dr. Levin that this board unanimously passed a resolution stating very strongly to the federal and state governments that climate change is man-made, is real, and is something the government needs to act on, and it wasn't much of a debate up here. We, as a board, sought from the EAC a report card from them on how we've done in the last decade in trying to make things better here in this township, and we got from them advice as to how to continue those efforts and improve them. So, from our lips to God's ears, I hope local action creates state reaction and federal reaction, but yes, I'm quite aware of it, as are all my colleagues, and I think we're responding to it. So, that's all I had.
Thank you. Any other gentleman on the board? Thank you very much. That will conclude the Citizens Forum. Moving on to our next item, number nine, is approval of the minutes. Commissioner D'Amelio?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 10, 2017. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any comment? Take the motion, please. Take the...
Mr. D'Amelio? Yes. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 10 is approval of the warrants. Commissioner Holmes?
Mr. President, Mr. President, I move we approve warrant number 11 of 2017 totaling $8,665,232.95, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for October 5, 2017, in the amount of $611,638.88. The general sewer fund payroll for October 19, 2017, in the amount of $661,356.98. The general sewer fund payroll for November 2, 2017, in the amount of $621,985.08. General fund disbursements, number 11 of 2017, in the amount of $2,872,259.30. Sewer fund disbursements, number 11 of 2017, in the amount of $165,566.84. Community development block grant fund disbursement, number 11 of 2017, in the amount of $53,493.80. Capital projects fund disbursement, number 11 of 2017, in the amount of $2,959,804.69. The debt service in the 2010 series, interest alone, in the amount of $413,631.25. And debt service in the 2016 series of bonds, principal, and interest, in the amount of And a credit card statement ending October 27 of 2017, in the amount of $6,404.88.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. McGarrity. Comments?
Mr. President, our auditor has been through these warrants. Any questions that these warrants have raised, he has raised to our township manager and our finance director. Those questions have been answered to his satisfaction, which he has reported back through our township manager, Mr. Gentile, and indicated that he would approve these warrants, and therefore, I recommend that you all do the same.
Any further comment? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
He stepped out.
Yeah. Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
He stepped out.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 11 is the business tax collection agreement. Mr. Holmes?
Yes, Mr. President. I move we reappoint Tri-State Financial Group LLC of Bridgeport, Pennsylvania, as the administrator and collector of our township's business taxes in accordance with the township's ordinances for an additional one-year term ending December 31, 2018.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Wexler.
Mr. President, this is a reappointment at the request of and suggestion of our township finance director. Tri-State Financial Group has been performing this role for a number of years now and has done a fine job, and there is no reason, either statutory or at this point, any best practices that would suggest that we not continue this relationship with Tri-State Financial Group, so I recommend that we reappoint them.
Thank you. Any further? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Tri-State Financial Group.
Hold on, I'm sorry, Larry. It's okay.
Reappoint Tri-State Financial Group.
It's a reappointment of our business tax collectors.
Oh, yes.
Number 11.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 12 is ordinance P 202017. This is a second reading in the fifth ward.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to adopt the second reading ordinance P 202017 authorizing the establishment of traffic restrictions on the following highway. Parking of all vehicles prohibited at all times, Highland Lane, south side, 100 feet west of Cooper Town Road.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Oliva. Comments? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
McGarrity?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 13 is ordinance P 212017. This is a first reading of traffic in the second ward. Mr. Oliva?
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to adopt ordinance number P 212017, authorizing establishing of traffic restrictions on the following highways. Parking of commercial vehicles prohibited at all times in excess of 8,000 pounds on Lansdowne Avenue. It's actually Lansdowne Road. That is incorrect. Lansdowne Road, both sides from Park Road, and that would be East Park Road to Landilla.
Okay, making those notations, Lansdowne Road, both sides from East Park Road to Lansdowne, or to Landilla Road. Seconded by Mr. Lewis. Comments?
Mr. President?
Mr. Holmes?
Mr. Christian Oliva, is this the, this is one of the things I've been concerned about, the commercial vehicles, which has different definitions throughout our, throughout our ordinances. And I'm just wondering, since I know the ordinance committee is taking up trying to, trying to make uniform and streamline the, our parking restrictions, whether or not this is something we could postpone? Or if I could just get an explanation of what is a commercial vehicle over 8,000 and what's a commercial vehicle under 8,000?
Well, it's all over the township, so we normally restrict vehicles, commercial vehicles over, in excess of 8,000 pounds, which would be a modified pickup truck, so something in the 2,500 or 2,500 range.
But, right, but we also have commercial vehicles defined as just any vehicle, no matter the size, if it has any writing on it.
Right, it has to do with writing.
And I guess...
So, what this is saying is any commercial vehicle in excess of 8,000 pounds.
But what are we, what are we, I mean, my view is that eventually, what our ordinance should do is define commercial vehicles as vehicles that are, that are registered with the state as commercial vehicles and have commercial plates, and that trucks should be things that have truck, you know, tags, and so that we don't have the inconsistency. So, we can adopt this, but I'm just, my goal is that we're ultimately going to revamp all of these, and that's going to affect even what we pass tonight or next week or last month.
Correct. If it was, if we were able to agree to something that is going to be put together, and that's going to be a while, number one, and number two, I'm not sure we'll, you know, I have faith in this group, but we tried to pass it before, and it has failed. So, these people over here need relief right now, so I would hope that we could pass this tonight.
Is the complaint, I'm just assessing, is the complaint more than one vehicle being parked there?
We have, we have several vehicles that are being parked because as we go through the, instead of having obviously a all-over, we have been following these vehicles because we're right off of Darby Road. So, this is one block off of Darby Road, and so, commercial vehicles that are along Darby Road, there's a lot of them along Darby Road, are using this road. So, we've been chasing them through this neighborhood, and now we're at this.
Now, does this restriction apply to, I mean, it's a silly example, but a monster truck, which wouldn't be commercial but would be over 8,000 pounds?
We could add that to the ordinance. We could say, and trucks over the things, but what we're, what we're dealing with is...
I don't want you to add anything.
What I'm dealing on this street is a commercial vehicle. So, we're dealing with commercial vehicles that have...
A commercial vehicle that's like tagged a commercial vehicle? That's a registered commercial vehicle? Or it's a commercial vehicle because it's associated with a business?
I have not, I have not checked the tag on the vehicle, so I wouldn't know, but it is a vehicle that has writing on the side and is over 8,000 pounds.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Pico, like a Pico truck? Somebody takes a Pico truck home or a...
different definitions throughout our, um, throughout our ordinances. And I'm just wondering, since I know the ordinance committee is taking up trying to, uh, trying to make uniform and streamline the, our parking restrictions, whether or not this is something we could, we could postpone? Or if I could just get an explanation of what is a commercial vehicle over 8,000 and what's a commercial vehicle under 8,000?
Well, um, it's all over the township, so, um, we normally restrict vehicles, um, commercial vehicles over, in excess of 8,000 pounds, which would be, um, a modified pickup truck, so something in the 2,500 or 250 range.
But, right, we, but we also have commercial vehicles defined as just any vehicle, no matter the size, if it has any writing on it.
Right, it has to do with writing.
And, uh, I, I guess...
So what this is saying is, any commercial vehicle in excess of 8,000 pounds.
But what are we, what are we, I mean, my view is that eventually, what our ordinance should do is define commercial vehicles as vehicles that are, that are registered with the state as commercial vehicles and have commercial plates, and that trucks should be things that have truck, you know, tags, and, you know, so that we don't have the inconsistency. So, uh, we can adopt this, but I'm just, my goal is that we're ultimately going to revamp all of these, and that's going to affect even what we pass tonight, or next week, or last month.
Correct. If it was, if we were able to agree to something that, that is going to be put together, and that's going to be a while, number one, and number two, um, I'm not sure we'll, you know, I'm, I have faith in this group, but, uh, we tried to pass it before, and, and it has failed. So, these people over here need relief, right now, so I would hope that we could pass this tonight.
Is the complaint, I'm just assessing, is the complaint more than one vehicle being parked there, or is it...
We have, uh, we have several vehicles that are being parked, because as we go through the, instead of having, obviously, a, a, a all-over, um, we have been following these vehicles, because we're right off of Darby Road, so this is one block off of Darby Road, and so, commercial vehicles that are along Darby Road, um, there's a lot of them along Darby Road, are using this road, so we've been chasing them through this neighborhood, and, and now we're, we're at this.
Now, does this restriction apply to, I mean, it's a silly example, but a monster truck, which wouldn't be commercial, but would be over 8,000 pounds?
Uh, we could add that to the ordinance. We could say, "and trucks over the things," but what we're, what we're dealing with here is...
I don't want you to add anything.
What I'm dealing on this street is a commercial vehicle, so we're dealing with commercial vehicles that have...
A commercial vehicle that's like tagged a commercial vehicle? That's a registered commercial vehicle, or it's a commercial vehicle because it's associated with a business?
I have not, I have not checked the tag on the vehicle, so I wouldn't know, but it is a vehicle that has writing on the side and is, um, over 8,000 pounds.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Pico, like a Pico truck? Somebody takes a Pico truck home, or a, uh, I don't know, bread truck, or plumber's truck?
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, that would be over, in excess of 8,000 pounds, yes.
In fact, both those vehicles would have either a truck tag or a commercial tag. I was just going to say that, they probably would have those tags. Like the monster truck would have a commercial tag on it. All right. So, so, so a homeowner who owns a plumbing business, his truck would, would, if it's over 8,000 pounds, but if it's under that, let's say it's just a van... On that street.
Let's say somebody has a pickup truck in excess of 8,000 pounds?
No, just...
If it's under?
If he, if it's a commercial, well, can it, and I'm sure, I'm not sure I'm phrasing this question correctly, I'm sorry. So, if it's a, a plumber, let's say, who, who has a van, and it has, do some of these vans have commercial license, even though they're not, they do, right?
They could.
So would that, that would count, or no?
Yes, that, that would restrict that vehicle if it's...
That would restrict that vehicle.
If it was over 8,000, yes.
If it wasn't, that's what I'm saying, if it's just a van that's not, but has a commercial...
If it's a van that's under 8,000, then it would not, this, this would not restrict that vehicle from being on that street. But in this particular case, the vehicles that are on the street are over 8,000.
In the Commonwealth, right now, as far as a van goes, if it has windows all the way around, it's a station wagon, so it's licensed as a regular car. If it does not have windows, on the back of it, it's licensed as either a commercial vehicle or a truck.
Right, like an SUV, you could have an SUV that is, is over 8,000 pounds, but it's considered a station wagon, because it is an SUV, so...
The SUV would be excluded from your ordinance, right?
It would be, yes, because it's not a truck. But it's not commercial, so, you know, if you're, if it's your car, your SUV, then you would, it wouldn't be here, but there are, there are SUVs.
Wouldn't it take up just as much room?
What's that?
Doesn't it take up just as much room as an 8,001-pound commercial vehicle?
Well, it's, if you're, not as much as a box truck with writing on the side, an orange box truck with a, with writing on the side, yeah. An SUV, no.
A box truck's probably 12,000 pounds, right?
What's that?
An orange box truck would be a lot more than 8,000 pounds, wouldn't it?
Uh, it depends, it depends on the chassis it rides on.
Again, my point is not to interfere with, with what you need to do on Park Road and Landillo. My point is that we've got, this will now, you know, we, we have 10, or 11, or 12 different iterations. Is it 25 different iterations of what's prohibited here and there?
Twenty-five streets that are affected.
And page after page after page of different streets that have different restrictions on them. Quite a few were passed long before any of us were on this board, that were passed because neighbor Joe hated neighbor Jane and hated their husband's truck, and, and so, um, I, you know, it's really important, optimism or not, that we streamline this and try to line it up with how the state defines.
I agree with you. Again, I agree with you, and I brought up the, originally I brought this up, and, and this board shot it down, so, what I'm saying is that...
I don't recall this board shooting down, having a discussion about the fixing of the...
No, not shooting down, not, not the discussion, the actual ordinance.
But which one?
The actual ordinance, the one about trucks. Laurie, could you...
Well, I don't, we don't know that we want to... I ask you here, yes, Mr. Siegel? Yeah, I don't know that we want to go back through history, because we've had many discussions.
Exactly.
The current ordinance, right now, lists 25 different streets where there are restrictions. The goal of what the ordinance committee and what we're, and I'm waiting to hear from the chief and verify, is to, to revise the ordinance so that it uses the definitions that are adopted by the state, and so that we would have one consistent policy townshipwide, regulating the vehicles. Whether, you know, there'll be a consensus here, I don't know, but that's what I hope we will be able to discuss next month, um, in a work session, because at that point, we'll have had the feedback, the ordinance committee will have had, the rest of the ordinance committee will have had the opportunity to weigh in. It, it's just the, what I call zoning by street, that always concerns me, because when we've done it with parking in other areas, all that happens is, the, the offending vehicle or parkers or whatever simply move somewhere else, and then we just wind up with that problem, and I would rather we have a township-wide solution than block by block.
The only problem you have with a township-wide solution, again, is you have people who are, who, who work and have to bring home the truck, okay, and they live in houses that don't have driveways, so now that person can't park on his street. So that's, that's your, the conundrum, you're in.
Isn't that what you're doing here? I mean, if somebody lives on Lansdowne Avenue who might have that situation, not able to do that?
There, it happens all over the township. In this particular case, that person does not live on Lansdowne Avenue. They are, they are a business who, who is on Darby Road, and they are parking vehicles along, in that area, so this is what that restriction is for. We don't have one all over the township, so these people need relief, just like everyone else. Every other street in this township needs relief of commercial vehicles, so...
But we can't give every street in this township relief from commercial vehicles, because three-quarters of the people who live in this town drive commercial vehicles, and that's how they, I mean, half, I mean, we're a, we're a, we're a town of people that work, and we're a town of people that own their own businesses, and, and we're also, you know, we're an organization that would rather, you know, we're, we're a body that, as a, as a, as a matter of policy, would prefer that businesses let their workers take their trucks home, so that they don't have to drive a car to work, drive a truck all day, and then drive their car home, so, uh, it, every one of us can justify doing this, each, every one of us can justify this for our street, in our wards, but it's built up over 40 years, and it's getting harder and harder for folks, especially in my ward and the sixth ward, for people to be able to park anywhere in the neighborhood, because of the buildup of these restrictions.
Okay, you're, so you're, but you're, okay, if we, just to move this on, if, if I could, um, your concern, though, tonight, is that you're asking, Mr. Oliva, could you, could you table it until the committee has a better definition, and Mr. Oliva, I believe, is saying at this time, "No," because we don't, it's, this is here now, we don't have that definition, so he would like to move forward on it.
Right, and I'm not asking...
And when that definition comes up, then you could change that with the rest of the other 25 streets.
What I'm making clear is that each, and, and it's just, it just happens, Commissioner Oliva, to be, to be, you know, an ordinance in, in your ward, but last month it was three other wards, and next month there'll be two other wards.
Right, but there was no discussion.
But this has to be, the, I've brought this up every time we've done this in anybody's ward, to, and I've made all of you mad, as I raise this issue, each time we try to stop commercial vehicles or trucks, so, this isn't aimed at you, Mario, this is aimed at the notion that we have to fix this, and each time we do one of these, before we fix this, I'm going to raise it again, just like I've raised it before. So, I'm not going to vote against this, but I'm going to vote ultimately for an ordinance that's going to wipe out a lot of what we're doing, with all these, with all these hodgepodge checkerboard parking restrictions.
Okay, I agree. I think, Larry? I'm all for it.
I just want to reiterate, though, I, I'm, I'm not in favor, I agree with you, I remember, if you're bringing up a lot, I'm not in favor of blank, putting a blankment, a blanket ordinance across the township.
Sure.
Jim, I'm not in favor of the blanket ordinance. I, I, I do agree that it should be defined, define a commercial vehicle, and it should be done street by street.
And Mr. Connell, I agree with you, because for the last 30, 40 years, it's been done where the neighbors sign a petition, present it to their commissioner, bring it before this board, and we vote on it. Now you want to take that away from the neighbors who did all that work, and just make it a blank whatever, and I don't believe that's the right way.
There you go, Jim. Okay. Thank you, Jim.
Is there anything further? There being none, please take the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
With great reservation, yes, of course, Mario.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes, item number 14 is the continuation of Citizens Forum for non-agenda items. Anybody who may come up and speak about anything on this side of the room, please come forward, name and address, and your concern.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Loretta Kurlish. I live at 518 Upland Road in Haverford, and I, I have to let you know that I'm, I'm a bit nervous and uncomfortable, um, being up here tonight. The issue I'm bringing up may sound minor, but it could have major repercussions. I, uh, this summer I had looked into the possibility of appealing a tax assessment on my house that had recently been, uh, had done an addition, so there was new construction at the house back in the summer, or the winter of 2013, and it continued into 2014. Anyway, I was immediately reassessed and paid my taxes, and I thought about, maybe I should appeal it, because I didn't think that, it seemed a little high, so, um, in doing some research, I found out that, um, a property close by, who also did major construction at the exact same time I did, had never been reassessed, although permits had been pulled on both properties. And I want to, um, preface my remarks by saying that this was just a search of property, my property versus somebody else's house, it wasn't a personal matter. It was just, how could one house be taxed and one house not? So I, uh, inquired on the township, and as I said, permits were pulled at each property, so I went to the county, because the township told me to go to the county, and the county told me to go back to the township, because, uh, they didn't get the permit, so, um, anyway. Make a long story short, when I went back and explained this to the township, um, I didn't get any satisfactory answer, they blamed the county, and what happened right after this inquiry, um, was highly inappropriate, and I am not, um, comfortable talking about it, because I have talked in private to my own commissioner and to, um, the township manager about what happened, but I can tell you this, by the time this countywide reassessment, I think it's expected in March of 2018, occurs, um, I will have paid a substantial amount in a reassessment of my property, and I'm wondering, is it one house, or is there, are there a lot of properties in Haverford, because if there are a lot of properties that were missed in an assessment, we're getting, the county, the township's not getting, and the county's not getting the proper taxes. This has been looked into in communities all over the United States, where you have under-assessments or properties that just are missed, and if it's an oversight, so be it, but I am going to pursue this, because I am dissatisfied at the responses I have been given, and I'm also dissatisfied at, um, the manner in which my inquiry was received, and as I said, highly inappropriate behavior followed my inquiry. It was an innocent inquiry into my taxes, and by the way, I missed the tax deadline for appeals, so it was a moot point. It was just by happenstance that I found this other property, and as I said, um, if I'm right, that it's, it's just not fair. I'm not looking for a tax break, I'm looking for equity across the board, and I'm pretty upset about it, and, um, uh, I might add, it's, I, this is not related to this, but as far as commercial vehicles go, I've lived here for over 60 years, and I've watched how the townships change, but if you're the person that has somebody else's commercial vehicle parked in your, in front of your house on Christmas morning, you're going to be pretty upset by it, and if you're using your street, anybody's street, to stage their business, then, no, I don't have any, any empathy for these people. I understand that, uh, some people rent spaces, and I, I'm not suggesting that everybody has to take their cars up the street, but there's a lot of cars on the street, it's very congested. And finally, I will say that not everybody is in total agreement about the comments here about climate change, and in all due respect to Dr. Levin and the board, there are different opinions on the opposite side, but I am going to pursue my tax assessment issue at the county level, and I'm not going to rest until I find out if this was an innocent mistake, or it's more systemic across, I don't know how many townships are in the county, but I think there's numerous, I don't know, 48? How many townships are in the, in the Delaware County? Does anybody know?
Forty-nine, I think it is.
Okay, 49 townships.
Thank you, Mrs. Kurlish, I, I don't want to cut you, there is, you do have a limit on this.
Okay, well, thank you for listening, and again, I'm not, I was not comfortable making these statements, but I want you to know.
Thank you very much.
I want to, I just want to add for a second, I, literally, I, I did an addition I believe, no, somebody's got to read the motion first and then...
Who has the motion? Marion, do you have the...
I do not have the motion in front of me right now.
All right, can you pull it up?
Resolution.
Yeah, it's right here.
It is. P-18.
Yeah. I have it. Twenty-sixty-nine, two thousand seventeen, is that it?
Yes.
President, I'd like to make, yeah, that's it. Make a motion to read a resolution. Resolution of the Township of Haverford, Canada, Delaware, common with Pennsylvania. Amending Resolution Number Eighteen Forty-one.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Don't we have to, don't we have to put it into the, into the...
It's new business if we're going to adopt the resolution, yeah.
I thought he said we had new business, so. I'd like to make a motion to add this to the, the agenda. Be a resolution number twenty-sixty-nine, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
To amend the resolution, to amend the resolution eighteen forty-one, two thousand twelve.
All right, and a second of Mr. Aliva. And I'm going to ask for a show of hands, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I heard a couple of ayes. Thank you. All right, Mr. Wechsler?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. The resolution is the township is to amend, amending resolution eighteen forty-one, two thousand twelve to include the sale of beer and wine at the Giant Store located in the Township of Haverford. And to make this revision effective November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. As soon as we get a second, we can have Laurie explain it.
Second.
Second.
Mr. President, just one correction to the actual resolution. In the fourth, the last paragraph, there's a typo. It should say seven AM to ten PM, not seven AM to ten AM. So just make that one correction.
That's for early drinkers.
Early drinkers.
Yeah.
So with that, just one nit.
Laurie, you're on.
In two thousand twelve, the Board of Commissioners approved a resolution authorizing the Giant Store at the Quarry Center to receive a liquor license transferred in from another municipality in Delaware County for the purposes of selling beer. Since that time, the Commonwealth changed the provisions for these restaurant liquor licenses to allow for the sales of wine. Giant applied for and received approvals to add that to all of their stores with the Commonwealth, but did not come back to Haverford Township Board to modify the resolution of approval it was given to allow the liquor license to transfer in, which was a beer-only license for this restaurant license. So because they have this wine expanded permit, they need the modification of the resolution. Apparently, the LCB was out there, looked at their paperwork, saw that the board's original approval for the transfer of the liquor license said, read beer only. So it should say beer and wine. And that's what you're looking at.
Any further questions?
I have one question. I don't remember doing this for Acme at all, for the beer or the wine. They started selling beer after the, after they took over the Super Fresh. How come we didn't have to do it for them?
They sold wine too.
They didn't have to, they didn't have to transfer in a liquor license from...
They had a liquor license, sticker on the window, I did see that.
If they have a liquor license in the, in the township, they don't come to the board. You only get applications for liquor licenses that are brought in from another municipality in the county. That's the only time, it's, it's the transfer of, an intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license that you...
But my question is, was a Super Fresh that was headquartered here, it was bought by another firm, Acme, who was not here? That there was no liquor license here in that supermarket? So how did it get here without us knowing?
It doesn't, wouldn't come to you if, if the liquor license came from inside a Haverford Township.
What Laurie means is you applied for it and got it.
So, yeah.
Yeah, they went to the liquor control board.
To the liquor control board.
Right, they simply did what you do, which is go to the liquor control board and ask for it and get it. And we don't have jurisdiction over that.
Do we get a record of where it moved from within the township then?
It didn't move from anywhere.
Yeah.
She said it had to go, if it didn't come from...
You could probably, you, we could probably check that on the website.
Yeah, because I mean, it just seemed, it just kind of makes sense. If we're doing it for Giant, we would have had to do it for Acme as well. Both of them.
Well, I know for sure that Giant brought in a license from out of, out of the township. I don't know that...
I don't know where Acme's came from.
No, we can look into that.
Yeah, they're new, okay.
I'd be curious where it came from too.
Yeah, I just, it just popped up when we were talking about it because they're a new company that came into town, took over the Super Fresh.
Bill, I saw a liquor, you know, those stickers they put in the window?
Yeah, the orange.
The orange sticker, I saw that in their window for a while, but...
Yeah, I'm not criticizing, I'm just curious, that's all.
No, I understand. I'd be curious too how that happened. Good point.
But the same thing for Carolino's. I would be careful how, I mean...
No, we have an obligation, Larry, to at least question it. It's okay, we're just questioning it.
No, we can question it, but Laurie has made one thing very clear, that the Giant is before us because the Giant transferred theirs in. It's just, we have to be careful about not suggesting by implication that Acme's done anything wrong here.
No, no. I'm not saying that. They're a large chain, they're...
Those are the same procedure of how they got their license.
Because we didn't have to approve it and they're a new vendor in town, so in that location. Unless they moved it from the one on Lancaster Avenue to there, but...
It's just curious, you know, it could have been that it was transferred from within
If there's nothing further, the resolution has been read. Does anybody have any more comment? Take the roll, please.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. McCloskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
For the little guy, I vote no.
Mr. Wechsler?
Yes.
Mr. Aliva?
Yes.
And Mr. Connell?
Yes. Motion carries? Anything on new business? Anybody wish to bring anything up? Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, one thing. We, Friday is the deadline for applications for boards and committees. We have to, as a board, set interview dates, so we should think about that because we do have applicants. And the other is just for the public to know, there's, they can still apply. We have plenty of positions, so I encourage everyone to apply, but this board needs to set the dates because we are interviewing all the applicants, new and re-applicants as well.
Okay, so the Friday, November seventeenth is the deadline date, close of business, four thirty?
Four PM.
Four PM? Okay. On the seventeenth. Now, do you want to schedule dates now?
Have Gloria circulate some.
What we'll have to do is also...
I'm sorry? Circulate some dates.
Gloria, circulate some. We're all back here in a week. I mean, we can do it at the end of the budget meeting. Set our dates.
Yeah, I mean, the dates need to come from here. We take precedent over this room, so.
Yeah.
All right, so by, by next Monday, everyone please, one way or another, contact...
You're going to need two nights for the amount of...
That's what Gloria said.
Monday's the, I mean, the twentieth's the budget.
Right, so what we're saying is that at the end of the budget hearing, let's plan two days, two nights to do these interviews.
Right, the seventeenth is the deadline, the twentieth is the budget and that's when the schedule is set.
Dr. Hart needs to be part of it or can be.
Okay. And let's see, what else is it? And as we already spoke, that the twenty-eighteen preliminary budget meeting is next week, November twentieth, two thousand seventeen. Okay. Anybody else have anything on new business? That concludes new business. And if we could go into our other business for the evening, I'll begin with Mr. D'Amelio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the Westgate Hills Civic Association and Tim Denny and his staff for meeting with us at Westgate Park to review the park and some of its, the conditions there. So thank you, Tim, for taking the time to come and thank you to the Civic Association. Also, Veterans Day passed and we, certainly I want to thank everyone that has served our nation in whatever capacity that they have or still do all over the world. So thank you for your service, including really, you know, we just tend to forget sometimes our volunteers, the firefighters and the police and all emergency services, EMTs and, and paramedics as well. The Civic Association will be hosting its, believe it or not, Christmas is coming soon, so they'll be having Santa at the park. And Manoa Fire Company probably will be taking Santa over as they usually do. I don't have the exact date yet, but if you check their, their website shortly, you'll, you'll be able to find that date. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. McCloskey?
Yeah. Just a couple of dates first, so you can get on your calendar. We'll meet before then, but Haverford Alliance for Drug Awareness is having a holiday vigil on December fifteenth at six PM. It's going to take place at the Lanark Crossing Park on Darby Road in Westchester Pike. Everyone is welcome to attend. And I'll have more information about that next month. As Mr. Brooks mentioned, the Haverford Township Recreation Department does have their sixth annual Chili Trail Run on September, on Saturday, December second at nine AM. It is a good time and the trail is worthwhile. It's about a five K, but it's a fun event and they're doing, the Recreation Department does a really good job, so if we can come out and support that, it would be greatly appreciated. Just to touch on a couple of things in the third ward, I have met with some representatives of PICO over the last month and I know our township manager and Mr. Doherty have as well. I also sat down in a meeting with them and HPD to discuss the issues of the work that's been going on along Eagle Road and sort of just the construction vehicles in front of the businesses. The work has concluded. You wouldn't be able to tell that by some of the work being done on the sidewalks when I drove down it today, but the work along the road has concluded. The trench work, it needs, the temporary fill needs approximately thirty days until you can pave the road. So that should be scheduled for the end of November at the, early, first week of December at the latest. They are going to coordinate with some of the businesses and residents to try to avoid the Thanksgiving holiday, but we hopefully can see the light at the, the end of the horizon there. As for the light, during the construction, there was some damage done to the timing at Saint Dennis Road and Eagle Road and that, that will be fixed. The township's going to fix that, but we have worked out reimbursement arrangements with PICO, so it's no expense to the township. But there was a problem to the timing, so if you sat at that light for what seemed like forever, you probably weren't just imagining it, you probably were sitting there for a while. But that should be repaired soon. And a third thing regarding PICO, Grassland Park in the third ward, many of the residents got notification that trees on their properties or trees at the VFW were going to have to be trimmed or it, or depending on the severity of the trim actually taken down. And some trees have been taken down. I was at the park just last week and what, we're going to try to save every tree that we can, but some of them are going to have to be taken down as, as they put in new electrical wires. The electrical wire will benefit the service that's provided to the residents, but obviously we don't want to lose any trees. And the township has arranged with PICO to, if, if any tree is taken down or any tree damaged to the point, it will be replaced by PICO at a location that the township chooses. So once the entire project is done, the township will work with them to get that done. But, you know, none of us are happy that the trees are getting taken down, but it's, it's part of a project. And along the same lines, I'm sure Commissioner Lewis is going to talk about the College Avenue Bridge. And before he does tonight, I just want to, on behalf of myself and the third ward residents, thank Commissioner Lewis, who has been on PennDOT, SEPTA, Verizon, Comcast, everybody involved in this project. And the efforts he's putting forth on, on the work that's being done on College Avenue Bridge are going to have benefits when the Ardmore Avenue Bridge construction starts. So thank you, Commissioner Lewis. And finally, you know, I was touched as we were sitting up there with the two little girls from Cooper Town. And it is just a testament to the fact that all of us have the ability to make a difference. You know, you're talking about an event that happened thousands and thousands of miles away across probably ten or twelve states in Texas, in an event as large as a hurricane. And we all know the disasters that stemmed from that and the disaster that happened from hurricanes in places like Puerto Rico and Florida. You know, but these two little girls didn't see it as a large problem that was too big for them to do anything about it. They, they just decided to do something. And in doing something, they, they made a difference. And that should be an inspiration to us all. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Siegel?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of local items. One, sort of to thank the township because they've been advocating and Mr. Gentili advised me recently that we've confirmed that Ellis Road will be paved in two thousand eighteen as part of the Ardmore Avenue paving by PennDOT. And that has been sorely in need of paving, so the township went to bat and PennDOT included the entire stretch from County Line Road to Lawrence Road. So that will be a benefit. Aqua will be doing a major infrastructure project along Lawrence Road that will touch on some of the other neighborhoods. And the goal is to coordinate it with the Ardmore Avenue Bridge closing when College Avenue finally, when that bridge reopens, because Ardmore Avenue is obviously a major thoroughfare into the fourth ward as well. So we'll be watching that carefully. I also want to thank PICO because they did something that people didn't see but is really important. I was notified by a resident that PICO was going to have sporadic outages on Tuesday, November seventh. That would have meant blackouts as part of maintenance in the Paddock Farms area where obviously people may be voting. I contacted our new PICO liaison on Tuesday night, the week before, and by Thursday afternoon, he confirmed that there would be no outages anywhere because the last thing any of us wanted was to be at a polling place with no electricity and having to rely on whatever backups they may have had with the machines. So thank you, PICO. Also, I want to just thank people in general. The numbers of voters was way up and for whatever your reason for voting, it is a, right, a privilege in this country that is often ignored. In the fourth ward, we saw a thirty-nine percent increase over voting from four years ago on, on a similar election. So that says something and people need to vote. The only way you affect change or get, or have people in power who, who are consistent with your views is to vote. Otherwise, you give up that, sort of, you abdicate that right. And I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I do, excuse me. November nineteenth at one PM is the Jan Marie Dedication at the Rec Center. And I encourage everyone to attend. And a second thing, it's been a long couple of days, is to commend the library. They had their gala and their first five K run this past Saturday, both of which were huge successes. They had a hundred and thirty-five registrants for the five K run. The gala was sold out and was a wonderful event and to those who attended, thank you. It's the last opportunity for them to have an event at the library of that type, but it was a huge success. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, unfortunately I have a College Avenue Bridge update. I'm sure you're all anxious to hear.
Unfortunately, I drove by there today. Looks awful.
So PennDOT finally got around to having a stakeholders meeting, which we held on October twenty-seventh and had, had a good group of people there. PennDOT, Michael Baker, who's the engineer, Roadcon, who's the contractor, SEPTA, Larry Dantilli was there, PICO was there, Marion Goff Club Center, Leach's office had Representative, Representative Vitale's office was there, our deputy chief was there, and also our, our public works director was in attendance. So we had about twenty-five people there. I won't bore you with all the details, but we went through in, in some, some length the reasons for the problems in the past and what the plan is going forward. And we agreed as a group that we're going to meet on a more regular basis, meet again in January, in fact. But the bottom line is that I think PennDOT has learned a lesson by this project and I think we're going to see much better coordination, particularly between SEPTA and PennDOT and the utilities Verizon and Comcast as a result of this, of this unfortunate exercise. But the bottom line is that we're going to have roughly, it was supposed to be completed at the end of this month and it's going to be, the new projected completion date is May twenty-second of two thousand eighteen. So barring, barring bad weather, that, that should be a realistic timeframe. So that's unfortunate, but I think the good news, again, I think PennDOT is, is going to, has committed to try to relocate the utilities prior to closing Ardmore Avenue. So, because that's, that's probably the reason for probably four or five months of that seven-month delay is attributable to the fact that there wasn't coordination, proper coordination between utilities being relocated before that, that bridge was even closed. So hopefully that won't be an issue with Ardmore Avenue with three times, three times as much traffic on that road as College Avenue. So, so again, that's all I have on College Avenue. I just want to again echo what Commissioner Siegel said about the library gala. They had a very successful event. It was a wonderful evening. It had a five K, good send-off for their reconstruction project and they're out raising money, which is good. So thanks to the library, the staff and to the board for their efforts. And finally, just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, thank you. I, I will limit my comments to echo Commissioner Lewis's. Everybody have a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
That's a record.
All right, I'll take all that extra time that Larry just gave me. Thank you. Now, number one, I just want to mention to the listening audience and the people there tonight, the firemen that were here tonight, basically, I don't think a lot of people realize that our volunteer fire company in this, in Haverford Township, the five different companies and probably two hundred volunteers, nobody's paid, okay? They're all volunteers, just like these gentlemen here tonight, they were here on their own time. They put in a lot of time getting a lot of things fixed, getting a lot of things done. The only thing I'm requesting of the people out there, I'm on the board with Brookline and Mr. Viola, but basically all the fire companies. We send out newsletters, please, if you haven't sent in your dues, send in your dues because that helps keep the fire companies going, not to pay any of the men or any, or the ladies with us, but it's also to keep the fire companies up to date on things that they need, basically, to keep their equipment and everything running perfectly. their equipment and everything running perfectly. So, those dues come in very handy so that we have all the apparatus in good shape, so that's what we use the dues for. My second thing is the trains at the Grange, December 3rd will be the first day that they run, that they run on weekends, basically, so please try and get your children down there, and once you do...and there's a lot of older people called rail buffs that love trains. This year will be a special surprise. Take a look at it, you'll be back year after year with the gentlemen that are working on the trains down there. They really do a fantastic job. Takes them two months to lay the whole layout out, just to know how big it is. It's two months' time. Let me see, the other thing is Larry Gentili helped me out down in Brookline. We're having a big problem with bicycles on the sidewalks and in front of the St. Jude Shop. We put in three bike racks for 15 bicycles so they don't throw their bikes down, and people come along and trip over them. Let's hope they use these bike racks, and they're there for the children so that they can park their bikes in there and not so the citizens would trip over them, and help the different businesses also, like St. Jude and McGillicuddy's and Jano's and the IVN. Those in particular are affected by the bikes laying on the ground. And finally, they have the Turkey Trot will be at Annunciation Church this year. It's Foley School and Annunciation. It's the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 25th. Please come out and support the schools and the Turkey Trot. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I just have a couple. Hilltop Civic will meet this Thursday night. It's also my quarterly constituent meeting in conjunction with their board meeting. And again, I'd like to echo what Mr. Siegel said on behalf of Mr. Goldsmith and the Library Director, Rochelle Nocito. Thank you for all those that attended the library gala. It was a huge success. The run was a success in the morning, and 247 registrants for the gala that evening. So, thank you to all the commissioners or your family representatives that came in your stead this time. It was a great, great success financially and a fun time. Also, the skate park at Murray Place is now open. It's finished. Come down and see it. The kids love it. I've stopped by there a couple of times, and Mr. Denny sent me a message today to remind me that it was finished, but I stopped by there on my way home a lot, and the kids really enjoy it, both young and old. And again, I'll ask you...echo what Mr. McCloskey said. It's great to see a difference in our youth. We represented...our township has such a good name in Texas now for what Cooper Town has done, and then the outgrowth with the Cooper Town Cares Program, just an idea from two little girls, that a principal listened to, a first-year principal. It's her first year at school. She was at the first week of class and a brand-new job as a principal, and these two little girls came to her with this idea, and she told them to run with it, and it's grown. The other children embraced it, and each class has taken on a project, and that one little initiative has grown into a big initiative that's included the entire school. So, I think we can be proud of the school, but on a larger sense, we're very proud of our community for embracing that, because it took family and parental support to support those kids as well as that entire community at Cooper Town, and I think it's catching on at the other schools. So, it's...we live in a great place, and it was heart-wrenching to see what happened to a grade school similar to Cooper Town in that...down in the Houston area, but it's also based upon the words of the principal. It's encouraging to see how they've grown, how they plan on getting through it, and with our help from straight...being the strangers that she referred to in her comments, I think we can be proud of our community, and it's a great place to live. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Levin?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out to vote, all those second warders who came out to vote especially for me. I want to thank them very much. It was a very...it was...there was, as Commissioner Siegel said, 39% more voting than we've had in prior years, so a lot of people came out to vote, and you can see clearly in my ward that there was a crossover. A lot of people split their ticket and voted for myself as whether, you know, whoever they wanted to vote to, so clearly voting for candidates and not party, so I really...that's a plus for me. The other thing I wanted to mention was the candidates. All the candidates who lost, you know, it takes a lot, a lot of time. I know that I was eight months in this, going door-to-door. All the time you spend, all the energy that's spent away from your family, and so I have a lot of respect for all of the candidates who ran this because, you know, you put yourself out there and you're hoping for the best, and sometimes it doesn't work out that way, but you still take time away from your family, and I thank them for that. I'd also like to mention the Grace Trail, which opened up last week. The Grace Trail is along...goes along right out of the reserve. It comes out of the reserve, and it actually goes on a private property. So, they gave us the Grace family...I'm sorry, Grace Cook, the Grace Cook family gave us an easement onto their property. This is not easy to do. This is the first time we know that's ever been done, that a trail has been put in, you know, to better the community, and these...to know Grace and the family, they really have a good understanding of what, you know, that we lease property. We don't own it, and it's not, you know...so, they have given us the right-of-way to be able to extend this trail and to be able to see nature. It is...it's one mile, one mile long. It is wonderful to walk through there and see some of the things that are going on there. Wanted, again, to remind everybody, commissioners here, to come to the HPD's annual meeting, which will be up at the Rec tomorrow at, starting at 6:30. So, come up, have, you know, a drink or two, and socialize, and have a good time with us. Also, wanted to talk about the PICO issue. Touched on it a little bit, the trees that are being taken down in some areas, they will be replaced, the trees will be replaced if they're taken down. I know that we have...PICO comes in and just cuts whatever they want because they are a utility, and they have...they can do it. So, they are replacing some of the green space that they've taken away in parts of...in parts of the ward, in places where they're trimming trees. It's...I mean, it's...we try to do what we can to try to prevent this, but, you know, they have the right-of-way, and they can do it, so they don't have to call the township, they don't have to tell us anything that they're doing. So, again, I wanted to mention the library. What a great job they did with the gala, dressing up the place and making it nice, and it was the biggest gala that they've ever had with, as Bill mentioned, the numbers from over there, just a great job by the library. What a great fundraiser it was. And with that, I have nothing further.
Yeah, Tree Tenders. Sign up.
Oh, yeah, we have to sign up for the...Tree Tenders next weekend, next...it's the 18th and 19th. If you come on the 19th, I'll be there, planting trees. You'll be there also.
Yes, on the 18th.
You'll be there on the 18th, and I'll be doing the 19th. So, you can come out and just go out to Tree Tenders, haverfordtreetenders.org, haverfordtownshiptreetenders.org, and sign up and help us put in some trees in Haverford Township. With that, I have nothing further.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Mr. President?
Yes?
May I just interrupt for one second? I was uncharacteristically silent in my comments earlier, and I will admit it was out of some deference to the consequences of the election. I do appreciate and thank the 6th Ward and everybody in the township who came out, and I'm sure Commissioner-elect Hart won't be offended when I say this, but while it may have been about the candidate in some places, I suspect in one instance it may have also been about the party. And I just want to remind you, Commissioner Connell, that you've been my co-commissioner for eight years, and you've been my president for the past two, and while we will be together for several more meetings, I just want you to know that it's been a privilege to work on this board with you.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to add the congratulations to Commissioner Hart, who is Commissioner-elect Hart. I said that properly, right? Who is in the audience tonight, and I look forward to, we will get together once, twice, however many times it takes, to go through the process. There are many, many things during this transitional stage. My gosh, you'd be surprised. It's...I have so much stuff. But so, I want to say to the 8th Ward, thank you very much for coming out to vote. It is very, very important to vote. There are so many places in our world where people stand in lines for hours and hours and hours, and who knows what could happen? They could be hit by a sniper, whatever the case may be, but in this country, you get to walk in, you know, it is one day, but you get to walk in comfortable atmosphere and cast your vote. There are so many men and women in our military that have given their lives to promote democracy, and it is our...not just our right, but it is really what we need to do. And for those who came out, excuse me, thank you very much for coming out and doing that. In my situation, that's politics, and we move on, and the best thing to do when we move on is to make the transition an easy one, because it benefits our neighbors, whether it be in the 8th Ward or the entire township. So, I look forward to that transition period. I want to bring up also, as far as construction goes, Arlington Road, finally, 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 Arlington Road, we're told, is going to be resurfaced on 2018. Commissioner McGarry and I probably hit up Mr. Gentili every year about Arlington Road, can it get on the list? And Mr. Gentili says, "Oh, my gosh, will you guys please go away?" But he does, and he contacts. So, finally, this year, it's on the list to be resurfaced. So is another concern that we have is East Manoa Road Bridge by Caricon Drive is supposed to be replaced in 2018. I don't know if it will, but we will get with the engineers to find out. So, that actually, East Manoa Road will be closed off at Arlington to Haverford Road for the replacement of that bridge. Still in the preliminary stages, but that's scheduled for 2018, believe it or not. I'm sorry I did not make it to the gala, library gala. I was unfortunately called out of town on a family urgency, so I'm glad that everybody had a very good time for a very worthwhile cause. Manoa Road Bridge, Arlington Road, Norristown High Speed Line. I will get also with Mr. Hart, the PNW Norristown High Speed Line goes through Haverford Township. There are seven stops. There are three of them in the 8th Ward, and the high-speed line is going to...heads up also for the other commissioners, is going to add a spur to King of Prussia. How will that affect our community? More people will want to use that line, and the more people that use it in our 8th Ward, we do not have any off-road parking, so that is a great concern. And for the past eight years, believe me, we've gone back and forth with SEPTA and the state to try to continue to keep the quality of life in our neighborhoods, you know, as high as we can. Our 8th Ward neighborhoods are becoming parking lots, and that is grossly unfair. So, with that spur, that's going to increase an awful lot of people who want to use that line. I want to say thank you to the Penfield Civic Association, wonderful group of young people. That's what it takes, the young people of the community coming forward with their young families. And let me tell you, on Election Day, how many people walked in, parents, holding toddlers and bringing, you know, two-year-olds in and what have you. Tremendous, tremendous. Yep, unfortunately, Mr. Levin, he's asleep. We are a growing community. We absolutely are growing, so...and it's a tremendous thing. So, I want to thank everybody for coming out to the polls. I want to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and we will reconvene here next week, Monday, the 20th, for the budget. We will come back in December on the 4th, excuse me, for the work session, and then we will return here on the 11th for our regular meeting. I'll take a... You know it, Jim. Return. All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.